Ain't something to do. The dude ain't been right a lot.
Working?
Working. Oh, that's right.
Lowell, you're used to it.
You know your boy.
Speech.
I think, oh, then that's, I was like, what do I have? I thought maybe I never think of his so catchy. What do I have? I have a medical.
Is this what they need to?
Let's call the board meeting February eighth, twenty twenty-four. Zach, would you please?
I will. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for just being you, Lord, showing us so much grace and mercy as we, as we need it, Lord. Let us continue to put you first, so the district will be able to thrive and move forward in the future. We love you and praise you. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How is everybody? Approval to June thus.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Otting?
Yes.
Brader?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
All right. All right. Lowell, where you coming from? Jaden, where you at? Come on. We're gonna recognize Jaden Capshaw, Loudoun High School basketball. Josh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've got to do this very few times, and every time I remember, it's been for a senior. Jaden, are you a senior?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. So we may get to see you back again, right?
I didn't quite make a thousand points by my junior year. But I'm here to congratulate Jaden and to give him a state proclamation. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board for this. I'm gonna read over this, and hopefully I don't mess it up, because I know how bad that third grade retention law is. It says, whereas we take great pleasure in paying tribute to those gifted athletes who have attained the very pinnacle of sporting achievement, and whereas it's important to recognize and honor those students who go above and beyond in their pursuits and goals. Whereas Jaden Capshaw of Loudoun is one such student who exemplifies dedication and teamwork at home and school and in his community. Whereas Jaden has worked hard with his teammates to be the third player to have achieved over one thousand personal career points in his high school basketball careers at junior at Loudoun High School. And has placed second in the category of most points scored in one game with forty-five points scored. Whereas Jaden has shown dedication to his family, teammates, school, and community in his unwavering commitment to making a positive influence on and off the basketball court. Whereas we are pleased to recognize and commend Jaden for his exemplary dedication to practice and the execution of basketball in middle school and high school. Now therefore, Cameron Sexton, Speaker of the House of Representatives of one hundred and thirteenth General Assembly of the State of Tennessee. At the request of and in conjunction with Representative Lowell Russell, do hereby proclaim that we honor and congratulate Jaden Capshaw for his unwavering commitment to an outstanding basketball career and extend to him our best wishes for every future success. And Jaden, congratulations. And would he be allowed to say a couple of words?
Absolutely.
Good luck.
I just wanted to thank God for having me out here. It means a lot. I hope that we handle business tomorrow and finish the year after the way we show.
You brought this up for you. You'll bring your family up here?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, come on, Scotty.
Scotty. Coming from?
Yeah. Everybody up here.
Are you kind of taking up all that over there? You got a little extra insulation. The biggest that I want to, how many did you score against Leonard City last?
Only twenty, I do.
What were you predicting for tomorrow night?
Jeff? I can't make that prediction.
We'll be there to cheer you on.
Right, here we go. Jeff, you want to get up here for, you raised him in.
I can tell you right now, that young man has put the practice in. He has put the hours in practice. He deserves every bit of it.
On another note, congratulations to Josh. What was it, Josh, for you? Hundred wins?
Oh, yeah. Thanks.
They don't count unless you win them all, huh?
Yep. All right, Greenback is not here tonight, but we have a new one, Mr. Charles Thomas from Loudoun High School.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Charles Thomas. I'm a junior at Loudoun High School. I play football. I'm a running back and a middle linebacker. And today, I am filling in for Ms. Lucy Bacon, as she is sick. So a lot has, a lot has happened since you guys have last heard this report. A couple of weeks ago, our students enjoyed a unexpected week off, a week and a half off from school, known as the snowmagon. So our, our seniors have continued to work on their, on their basketball as the deadline quickly approaches. They have had help from our counselors at the high school and the basketball help nights. Our seniors also continue to work tirelessly, apply for scholarships, receiving, receiving emails and newsletters bi-weekly with new scholarships and new scholarship opportunities. Our seniors had full attendance at the Tennessee Promise Meeting on January twenty-fourth. Some of our seniors received recognition on Friday, Jan- January twenty-sixth at the Top Twenty-Five banquet. Congratulations to our valedictorian, Burke Madder, and our salutatorian, Julianne Pinkston. And all the other students for all their hard work throughout the high school. We've had a very successful college fair for all of our students on Tuesday, February sixth. This allows our students to get to know more about, to get to know more and start planning about life after high school. Some big things that were at this college fair, some community colleges, UT was there, and other military was there as well. Our native Redskins basketball team are having the most successful season in the past few years. Our girls are working very hard, and it's evident on the board. Our boys' basketball team has had a thriller basketball game, taking the expected victory against the team across the bridge on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, sorry. We had our boys' homecoming basketball game and alumni night on the first of February. At this game, our homecoming king, Jackson Walker, was recognized, and Loudoun alumni were recognized. Congratulations to both. February second was future Redskins night, and we, and we recognized all future Redskins coming into freshman year. Tuesday, February sixth, was our basketball senior night. So proud of our seniors, and we will miss them next year. Tomorrow, LHS hosts Leonard City for round two of the basketball game at the Bell Bridge, and let's be honest, that's a win for Loudoun right there. LHS is also proud to host all of you board members as we celebrate Board Appreciation Month with our Board Appreciation Night with a dinner hosted by our culinary arts at six P M. at LHS. We also invite you to stay to be recognized between the games and the gym. Sunday, February fourth, was our football banquet, celebrating a great season with a great team. A great speech that I heard was a hundred year speech, which explained the history of Loudoun football and how it came from nineteen twenty-three to now. Our spring sports are gearing up for the season, and we are excited to see our Redskins excel in tennis, basketball, or sorry, not basketball, baseball, and soccer. Our teachers and staff members of the month for, for January were Gina Fink, Olivia Hicks, and Karen Yorsey. Our students of the month of January are Elliot Foo and Lydia Weaver. This week is National School Counseling Week, and we're so thankful for our wonderful school counselors, Heather Waldron, Sarah Kyle, and Carly Henson. Our very own Rebecca Pinkston gave an outstanding performance at the twenty-twenty-four ETS BOA All East Senior Band Clinic. Jennifer Brewster is taking two of the students to Belmont University, March fifth, for a Student Congress on Policies and Education Scope. Rebecca Pinkston and Brianna Zalte will be on debate panels discussing topics such as artificial intelligence, four-day school weeks, self-imagination in schools, and if every student should complete an internship as a requirement for graduation. We have a freshman information day coming up on February twenty-ninth. Any coming freshmen from Mark Peter schools will, will come to the high school tour and learn all about, all about Loudoun High School. We welcome, we welcome the families, we welcome the families of class of twenty-twenty-eight to an informational meeting, programming at LHS, March fifth, at six o'clock P M. Our high school indoor act club is collecting funds to go to their state convention, and we are excited to see our students learn from the convention. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Thomas. All right.
Did you just celebrate anything else with the football banquet?
Football banquet, we did have a second celebration with Loudoun absolutely destroying Leonard City in that football game.
I got a question for you. Who is the leading scorer at Loudoun High School, boys?
The leading scorer?
Yeah. You know this? No, basketball.
Basketball?
Jimmy Johnson.
Where, where's it from? Say it again.
Jimmy Johnson, probably.
Where you from? Leonard City. Remember that. He's a Panzer. Don't want you to forget that.
Hey, once they get washed in blood. They're ours.
Anybody sign up to speak?
No one.
Ben didn't.
Yeah. Guys, if you guys want to leave, you can. You can stay and listen to all this.
The board doesn't have that up. Forty-seven tomorrow night, right?
Let's go.
Somebody wants to speak? Okay, well. Consider.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges? Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Otting?
Yes.
Ms. Brader?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Our state film trip request. Mr. Garrett?
I recommend approval as presented at the workshop. R O P C does, does a really good job with the kids on this.
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Otting?
Yes.
Ms. Brader?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barker?
Yes.
Hey, move along. Budget amendments. Mr. Garrett?
Budget amendments as presented at the workshop with a couple additions. C T U amendment, they're taking some trips. We need to move some money over there. And then amended Title Three for instructional supplies and the tutoring grant to adjust salary lineups, make sure we spend that out appropriately. So I would recommend approval.
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Otting?
Yes.
Ms. Brader?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Coke is winding down the next phase of the project for us. And I asked them to kind of give a presentation on their, their updates. Probably won't see a whole lot of schematic difference from the last presentation. They've been designing their nuts and bolts and things that we don't see, but that we need to keep the building up. But they, they're, they're going to share where they're at and what they've done to make sure everybody knows where we're at. Frank?
So we are complete with the design development phase now and then move into construction document phase shortly, which is the biggest bulk of the work. But that's also the part that is really the, how the sausage gets made in, in the process. So there's not a whole lot you'll see there, except for colors and finishes and little nitpicky details like that. So that's kind of where we are on the big school. So I'll kind of start off. Greenback haven't really changed much on this one. The survey is getting ready to start for that one next week. They finished the Philadelphia survey. I'll get the results of the fieldwork on Wednesday of next week, and then they're going to start the fieldwork on Greenback. But it's going to go really quick because it's basically wide open field. And once we get all that survey work back, then we can kind of get into the nuts and bolts on that one. Same thing, football field scooting it over a little bit. Turf is an alternate. Artificial turf is an alternate. Relighting with L E D lights to bring up to the T S W A standards. New bleachers, both on home end and wayside. Reworking the handicap parking and handicap access for both sides. Auxiliary gym, still exactly where it was last time. Floor plan was, haven't changed that one any. Rendering hasn't changed either. So Philadelphia, we have made some changes. So mainly the art, the art tournament area, we rotated that around, put collapsible seating in. We've got two hundred and eighty-six collapsible seats. Clean room in the back for storage of the stage, the risers, all of that kind of stuff is all kind of housed in there. Reworked the entry to have a secure vestibule reception, three offices, and then open it up into the rest of the school.
This was based on feedback that we received from Mr. Dutton, who is the one that be utilizing the facility, and Mr. Martin on the office area vestibule. So same, same amount of space, just different.
Exactly the same. We just rotated it around to make it work a little better. Classroom wise, we got the, the survey information. We'll be back. The layout of that may change a little bit. Pull one off one corner and stick it on the other corner, just depending on how the grades work out. But again, we'll still have the ten classroom addition. Okay, big school now. Biggest change on the site is we reworked the baseball and softball fields to make them fit a little better and have full-size fields for both. The entryway has been tweaked a little bit to better utilize that joint easement from the church. We've got about fifty-six parking places down here, and the remainder of the parking is up top. So layout wise, hasn't really changed. Big picture, we did add another firewall here to break it into four separate fire areas instead of three. I know that doesn't mean a lot to you guys, but what that means for us is we don't have to fireproof the structure anymore with sixty dollars. That's a big, big savings. Detail wise, we made some fairly significant changes to the arrangement of the locker rooms on both sides. So we have visitors locker rooms up at the top. Football locker room here, basketball locker room there, P E locker room here. Centralized all of the plumbing fixtures, so we've only got one set. Everybody's got access to it. But everybody also has access to the weight room that's in the center, and then all that feeds directly out to the football stadium.
Just so the board's aware, I utilized the expertise of Mr. Harig at Loudoun High School as the football coach and Mr. Graves as the basketball coach. And they reviewed the athletic plans with me as well as, as the principal at Loudoun High School to, if, if they had their dream, how would they want it laid out? So that, that fed into the changes that he's talking about.
And basically, we did the same thing on the girl's side. Reworking all that to better share the plumbing fixtures that we did need. And we've got a layout for the wrestling room, the practice wrestling room. Haven't changed any of the bleacher layouts or any of that, so we still have the same amount of, of bleachers there.
And how many is that? Should I ask?
Just shot two thousand, maybe a little over.
That's what I was thinking right around too.
Upstairs, again, no changes there. We did add some bathrooms to this corner of the classroom area. And we've kind of fleshed out some of the science labs. Again, rendering, again, seeing rendering of the basketball in the gym. One thing you will see us do is update the color scheme to, to show you kind of what, what it could look like with the.
Black and white?
Yes, exactly, black and white. Blue, green, and gray.
Black, pink, or whatever.
Classroom area, this area really didn't change a lot. We did get some updated, we tweaked the kitchen layout a little bit. We've got the layout for the culinary arts now in here, so it pretty much is almost exactly like what you have at Loudoun High School.
That was improved by the Loudoun High School culinary arts teacher, and we had the, the chorus teacher look at auditorium.
So second floor auditorium, you feed from above and down or in through the little vomitorium back up in the auditorium stage. We did relocate the, flipped the restrooms and the green rooms just for some sound issues there. We did add an area up here where we have some, I can't read, sorry. Up at the top. We, we've got a kind of a tech support center for the whole school where you can come to a window if you've got trouble with your laptop, whatever. You can come there and, and they can either give you a new one, help you fix it, or answer questions. Again, everything else down here is pretty much the same. Bathroom cores, fleshing out the clap, the science labs, shared labs. Renderings of the common space and the cafeteria, you know, like both sides feed in, whether it's car riders from the front, bus riders from the back. Keeping those two separate, but everybody still feeds into the same common core area.
I hate, I hate to do this to you again, but I'm going to ask. So when, when we first sat down to now, about how many square feet have we cut out of this school since we started?
First stab was three hundred and thirty thousand square feet. We are now at exactly two hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty.
So we've cut about fifty thousand square feet. That's not, that we've lost space. We've just maximized based upon what we need. And we still got.
Three gyms. Yeah, three full-size gyms. Let me go back. Exterior renderings, really haven't adjusted those yet. Once we kind of get the name for the school, we'll add that name, tweak some colors, some materials. Go back to the site. So expandability, the capabilities for the school.
Can it, can it be expanded?
Yes, it can be expanded.
So that's true. It can be expanded.
We have an area here where we can get in. If we go two stories, it's twenty-two classrooms. If we go three stories, it's thirty-three classrooms.
So I could add another thousand kids if I wanted to?
Yes.
Okay. On that site?
On this site.
That's the truth.
Yes, Scotty.
I was making sure the board knows that this site is capable of being expanded, that we have built that in, because I've heard otherwise.
Yeah, a cou- couple of other milestones. We have started the traffic study with T-Dot. Had an initial phone call today, kind of kicking them off, going through what grades are going to be here, how many students, that kind of stuff, so that they kind of give us an idea of what they want to see in the traffic study, and then we can kind of go back and forth on that one. That's about six weeks to get this stuff back on that one. If T-Dot can maintain their schedule, but right now they are behind, so they didn't warn us that it may take longer than that. I think that's it. That's, that's my update in a nutshell.
Thank you. Does the board have any, any questions on where we're at?
I guess just a simple one. Going back to the gym, is it, are we putting, in the, in the main gym, are we putting a, uh, goals on sides like this, putting courts where you got, you eventually have four courts you could go with?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, there will be a lot.
Six goals.
Six goals on the ground.
Yes.
Two up top. We could technically do two more on the outside walls upstairs. We just can't do it on that other side because the collapsible bleachers, it would get a little tricky.
All right, on the baseball and, and or softball, is there any clubhouse?
We've got area to do it. It's just what we decide is going to fit in. So we've got here and then dugouts, and then dugouts. So we've got some playroom down here that's not all graded, so we can, we can do a fieldhouse here, and we've got room for a fieldhouse up at the football stadium.
It's, it's not in there yet, but we have room to do it.
We've got room to do it.
I can see that being a necessity.
Did we do away with the ten scores?
We don't have them in right now. Yeah, we're, we're looking at a couple other spots. And that, if we decide to resurface the ones at L C T C, we may not have to try to find a spot for them, because that's close enough to the school. We're not, we're not going to be able to utilize those. But it made it easier to get the two ballfields in down there by moving those. We're looking to see if there's a place up top that we can, we can drop them and not interfere with where we can expand the, the building.
There may be the opportunity here, grounding here, just playing with the retaining walls. But again, every time you say retaining walls, that tends to get into money, and we're trying to be as diligent as we can.
I'd like, I'd like to see kind of what this is going to cost before we start. I'd like I'd like to see kind of what this is gonna cost before we start adding other things or taking things away just to see where we're at.
Any more questions?
Yeah, could you pull up the baseball field again? What's that distance from that that foul line back to the softball field, from the baseball to the softball field, distance between them two? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that that's twenty feet, so twenty, twenty-six, twenty-six, probably ten here, so it's probably been a hundred feet.
What is the fence on the baseball and the softball?
The fence? It's T S W A regulation.
Just make sure, if you've ever played baseball at Stone Memorial, they have kind of, they're they're kind of like that, and you, the girls end up dodging baseballs a lot during the games if they're playing at the same time. But I don't think you'd have that problem, because those, I think those two are back to back, beside the side, Stone Memorial.
We got some athletes.
Foul net can work both ways, Scott. Foul net can work both ways.
Can't. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The foul net can work both ways, Scotty. Any more questions? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Mr. Garrett, where you go for it?
The board had asked me at the workshop, talking about the tennis courts at L C T C, we're working on estimates. We've asked for three different estimates. We've got one so far, about twenty thousand. So I'll bring that back in at the April workshop to the board to consider that if they want to, but just to give you an update on that. And then just to recognize that we're talking about baseball fields, Loudon High School was recognized by the state as having the T B C A Class Three A Baseball Field of the Year in the state.
You hear that all?
So our
I like it.
Our facilities and the maintenance of our facilities and our coaches' investment in that has paid off.
Looks good.
Are you gonna have any donors for these tennis courts, Miss Hunter?
She looked up. Hey, seriously, I will have to go off of a an idea from Miss Hunter, but we, if if you don't care to, have the board or have Mike Mike go and ask our, was it Fifth District? The two Fifth District, they still got ARPA money. And see if they'll pay, they'll give us some money to fix that.
Let's see, who is in the field?
I don't think they did, but we'll check. Have they spent all that from Miss Hunter, do you know?
Who is in the field?
It's
That would be Van and Mr. Morrison.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't care to ask them. I'd be glad to.
But you're not the director.
Oh, I thought I thought you meant one of us asking. I thought you meant one of them.
I guess you could ask.
Can you do that, Mr. Garrett?
I can ask them, yeah. I would prefer just to ask them and not do it in an official meeting, since I'm gonna go ask for this project. I don't want to blow my one chance at money on twenty thousand, if that's okay.
Hey, that was just my idea. If you want to say, forget it, we'll just do, we won't have to worry about it.
No, I will I will catch them and see if if that's something they'd be open to.
They may have plans for it, but never hurt to ask.
It never hurts to ask.
You hate hurting people. Bobby, how long you know me?
That's all you know. Does anybody have anything?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.